Okay, they're being brought to the hearing December 7th. Zoning Board Appeals, we'll start with the pleasurable leaders.
I'm so glad the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Master of Watch, Act of thirty-eight, Section twenty-fifth, this meeting is being recorded. The first order of business is a petition. A petition of Lisa Coffey, applicant and two sixty-five Howland LLC owner for a finding that the proposed addition and deck shall not be substantially more detrimental than existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood as mandated by zoning by law, Article five, section five, two, three. Subject property is located at two sixty-five Howland Road, Westport, Mass., and shown on accessories map lot, map eighty-eight, lot number thirty-five.
Read that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm reading my mind. So the way we'll conduct the hearing is I'll have the petitioner come up and provide whatever information is pertinent. The board will then ask questioners of the petitioner or the petitioner's representative. Once the board has completed asking questions, they'll then open up to the public. And after I hear from all the public, then we will close the hearing, at which point then the board will make a determination. So petitioner's representative. What started, I'm going to read a letter from Ralph Souza that prompted this. The Mr. Cohen, after review of the corrected construction documents with regard to proposed addition renovation of two sixty-five Howland Road, it was noted that the proposed addition of the existing dwelling is approximately four hundred and sixty-six square foot of additional living space with an additional three hundred and forty square feet of deck area. The application is hereby denied as per Westport zoning by law, Article five, two, three. Alteration pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be altered, providing there's a finding by the Board of Appeals that such alteration should not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. I want to, I also want to identify that per input from town council, what the, what is meant by not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood has to do with things like safety, traffic, something substantial rather than architectural issues, those kind of things. So with that, name and address, and when somebody comes up to talk, I'd like you to do the same thing. You come up to the microphone, give your name and address.
Good evening, Chairman. Sean Leach, Northeast Engineers, representing Lisa Coffey. I'm here tonight with Ms. Coffey and Peter Salino, attorney Peter Salino, representing her on this project. This is a house that's located on the west side of Howland Road, at two sixty-five Howland Road, on a twelve thousand five hundred square foot lot. It's a very small house, has a footprint of approximately nine hundred and fifty square feet. It currently just misses meeting zoning for the front yard offset to all the other offsets that meet zoning requirements. It's a one-story house. Ms. Coffey is expecting to add, as stated, four hundred and sixty square feet of living space and extending this existing deck and just pushing the deck outward and also putting a small addition on the front of the house. The shaded portion is the proposed additional space to put onto the house. All the additions and the deck meet all zoning requirements, recurring side yards, front yards, rear yards, setbacks, there's no problem with that. The lot coverage currently right now is about seventeen point nine percent. It's with the expansion, it'll reach twenty-two percent, which is well under the requirements of zoning. So it meets the zoning for the lot coverage, including the paved driveway. The lot itself is located about five hundred feet from the terminus of Howland Road at Atlantic Avenue, and there's expected to be no further traffic. It's just a simple modest addition to an existing residence that is fairly modest for this particular portion of the world. I don't think there's anything, you know, outstanding regarding any other issues, environmental, drainage, or anything else. There's nothing between Ms. Coffey and on essentially. She's not going up any higher, so there'll be no blocking of any of the views of the ocean and the pond from across the street.
The back end of that property goes into?
It goes into, well, what is Richmond Pond Road, which is a gravel road that runs right almost into the pond at this point. Essentially, so, you know, this is particularly, this is a small lot, but it is nothing in between basically Column Road and Richmond Pond Road. And all the requirements are met, other than it's a twelve dollar five hundred square foot lot with approximately a hundred feet.
I have a question, Sean.
Yeah.
The, on the right, is that a porch of some sort?
No, it's like a landing and a set of steps.
Okay. A landing, a raise from, up from the ground?
Yes.
A set of steps?
Yes.
Is that staying?
No, I, well, you're modifying.
I didn't see any.
The ramp and the, you're modifying to a landing and a set of stairs. I have a, I'm just standing here.
Should I say my name and address? Lisa Coffey, should I say my home address or that address? Fourteen Minuteland Avenue, Connecticut, or two sixty-five Howland. So where are you asking this?
Are you going to talk into the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
We can hear you, but that's being recorded.
Okay. So this is?
Why don't you put the microphone on the other side of you? There you go.
That's really lovely, so go ahead.
This currently has a ramp that was for my grandmother, for handicap ramp, we're removing the handicap ramp and just.
And a set of steps.
Okay. What I'm getting at is the, the distance is not shown here, at least I don't see it. I see the twenty-four eighth to the main building.
But not from the, from the.
It's approximately eighteen feet.
We just really ought to put that on, so we'll know that it's non-conforming.
Right.
And it's existing non-conforming.
Yeah, she's just modifying slightly the steps and everything, so it's about eighteen feet to land, what I'll call a landing in front of the front door.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, are you redoing the outside of the house at all? I mean, you're adding on, so does that mean you're?
So, this is a.
Right now, it's all.
This yellow you see is the floor plan existing with the existing deck and this ramp and landing deck, okay? What's, what's going to happen is this is going to be added on, this living space here, and here is being added on. And we don't have a before rendering, we have an after rendering, so this is what it looks like from the rear, looking at the deck. This is from the front of the house, okay? So what you see here, this roof line here, is the addition that's going on the front of the house, right here. The back, you won't see much, but it's this roof line here, essentially closing in the existing porch halfway and then re-establishing the porch, the deck outside, out to the back. So this portion here that you see is an addition, and this portion here. And what's happening is the deck that used to be, it's about the same size deck, it's just being, since we're adding on seven foot ten, we're pushing it seven foot ten out.
Right, well, really what I was asking is, you're modifying the house, so that means you re-shingle the roof, you re-shingle the, I mean, what?
Not the roof, the side of, yeah.
Just the side.
The house, but not the roof, the roof was recently done.
No, no, but, okay, but, so you're adding on, but it's a, but it's a, it's separable enough not to affect the main roof?
I think so.
Well.
It doesn't look like the roof, what's happening, the roof line in the back is going to be almost like a hip roof, it's going to come down.
That's what I mean, there's a.
Yes.
Separate roof, so you don't have to.
Yes, both have a separate roof, both the addition, you see the roof line here and the roof line here, will be coming off kind of like a dormer type, I would guess, coming off the midpoint of the existing roof.
I think one of the questions was, are you changing exterior shingles? I think it was, no.
No.
Okay.
So you're seeing what's happened here with the, the second part of the, under Master here.
Then the only reason why you're here is because this is non-conforming.
Yeah. Basically, everything conformed to zoning except a lot.
But why isn't?
Yeah, except a lot. It's kind of a rarity for a lot of the size thing.
But the.
The front steps, I don't need the twenty-five yard.
Twenty-sixty.
Yeah, and I think a lot of it is because a lot of people go electric layout for Howland Road that was done in the early hundreds, as well inside the wall line.
It is.
I'm having our time even coming up with questions to ask.
I know.
I'd like to ask.
Yeah. It looks like a good project. Beautiful area, I had never been down there before today.
What?
Well, what a good day to go down.
I live under a rock. I had never been south of the chapel before today. It's really beautiful, yeah.
You got lost, don't you?
I do live in Westport, too.
If you haven't, if you haven't been there, you must have got lost.
Did you take a right into Fort?
Yeah, that I know.
Well, now that they're actually using the fort.
Yeah. Well, an elephant ride's a great place to walk the dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I drove by it today just to, in the rain, let's, I like to get a feel for the neighborhood when we do these kind of things, because that's, you know, what you're affecting. And the neighborhood is a collage of all kinds of things. You've got massive stone houses and small ranch houses and.
Cottage.
Also still.
All kinds of different things there, you know, and people are obviously, you know, and we've, we've had a couple of petitions for that area, you know, people are.
With extensive houses, this is fairly, I would say, more than modest than most of what's going on down there, that represents some of those people, that's why I know.
My grandfather bought it in nineteen sixty-two, and I'm just trying to keep the integrity of the house I grew up in. I'm not making it bigger, it's fixing the yellow bathroom, not yellow tub, yellow toilet.
Right, yes, I mean, so I don't have any issues with the neighborhood, because the neighborhood is all kinds of, you know, it's, I mean, it's a nice neighborhood, it's a little bit of everything, it's a.
This time of year is very.
Quiet.
Quiet.
Yes. Yeah. Chair, you think we should at least note the?
I think that the engineer should note that on the plan.
I think on the master one that Maria has.
Yeah, the one that she has. It's a not, it's, it's an existing, so it's non-conforming, existing, and that should be noted, because if I look at this, it says existing, but we don't know how much it was big, is he going to make it bigger or?
Yeah, so Sean, if you could just.
That's no problem.
Identify the, the.
The distance.
Yeah, on the master. And when you, when you write on it initially. Well, are there any other, any other questions? Oh, by the way, the board members will be voting on it, are these four vote winners? It'll be Derek, Katina, Barbara, Ponellu, and myself, Rajmanar, Ray Elias, and Siti Kozekowicz. And because this is a finding, and it requires a majority vote.
Do we have a discussion? Comments?
So, if there's no other.
Comments on public?
Public comments, there are people here, so we're assuming they might want to make comments.
Yes, it's open to the public, if anybody wants to make a comment.
Ask a question?
Ask a question, say you like it, you don't like it.
I'm mostly here, we have a house at two seventy-eight Howland, so we are diagonally across the street. I just wanted to see the process.
Okay, yes, no, that's, that's actually good, because.
Because we have an upcoming, interesting thing happening near our house.
Okay, no, that's all.
We wanted to see.
To Atlantic Avenue.
Just the process.
Yeah, no, no, that's good, because it's good to get a feel for how the board works if you, because then if you ever need to come in front of the board, you sort of get a feel for the kind of things that, you know, how the, how the, you know, this operation is actually run.
Yeah, I'm in a butter, three Richmond Pond Drive, Mary West. We've been neighbors with the twins forever.
Can you come up and?
Come to the microphone.
Name an address and just, you know.
Mary West, three Richmond Pond Drive, so we're in a butter to, to her grandparents, and yes, forever, so I'm here in support of Lisa and her family, they've been great neighbors.
Good, thank you. Any other comments?
Nope.
No?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose, no. All that means is now we'll, we will talk about it and, and make a, make a decision.
I don't have any problem with this project.
I don't see there's any issues with this, it's not like that, you know.
Yeah, exactly, and a little bit of extra room.
Yeah, a little bit of extra room.
And it's not affecting the front edge and the stuff behind it.
Yeah.
Right, doesn't affect it, yeah, even if it, anyway.
Yes.
So, no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second that motion.
I didn't make a motion.
I'm entertaining the motion.
Oh, okay, entertaining, did you?
I'm entertaining. I will accept a motion from a member.
I, like most of that, we approve the finding.
That this project is.
As per.
As per the.
The drawing submitted today.
Submitted, the drawing submitted today for two sixty-five Howland Road, owned by two sixty-five Howland Road LLC, for the proposed additions and deck shall not be substantially more detrimental than existing non-conforming uses to the neighborhood as mandated.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
So we have a motion to grant, see, it's the petition, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, no, let the record show which unanimous, there is a twenty-day wait period from the time that you receive a letter from Maria, so don't just go knocking down any walls quite yet, but.
It's a way to build a firm.
This was like the quickest one.
I was going to say, the easiest case I've sat on.
This one's pretty easy.
Yeah, right. I was fumbling about something to ask questions about, but you really.
You can make it bigger if you want to make it.
No, I mean, it's, like I said, I drove by the, the property, and I think it's, you know, first of all, from the front, you're probably not even going to notice there's a difference.
No, you probably, you probably wouldn't even know anything happens to the stuff.
Right, right, I mean.
The inside will be better though, except for some mismatched shingles for a couple of years. They will be, yeah, down there, that will be done in about eight months or so, hopefully that'll be great.
Yep, so good luck, and I hope it turns out the way you like it.
Yeah, good luck.
Thanks very much.
And I hope that.
Beautiful area.
I hope you in the audience learned how to.
Congratulations.
By the way, the, this isn't the way it normally works. Usually, usually we're here for an hour discussing things, and people come up with, this, this was about as quick as it gets.
When you get mill plant.
So, the next order of business, let's tackle the meeting minutes.
May I approach the board just briefly?
Certainly.
It's on a different entirely matter. We received a notification.
Can you come up and?
You have a name?
Name and address.
Paul O'Connor, two seventy-eight Howland Road. I'm here to just get some rough advice or guidance on a project that's going to be in a medium butter to the south of us, which is the ocean side, at two Atlantic Avenue. I received a letter from Conservation Commission, because this existing property is in the wet, you know, it's in the flood plain, so they needed to get permission to excavate the building. So their plan is to excavate the existing building and build a house that's on stilts, and I have the diagrams here as to what they might be in the future.
No, we don't, originally, we don't, no, we don't need to see things.
Do you need demolish the existing building?
I'm sorry?
Do you need demolish the existing building?
They're going to.
Is it excavated? The existing building is going to be demolished.
What is your question?
The question is, we are immediate butters, and the building, if it goes up as existing, is going to greatly affect our views of the ocean and also probably sunlight in the winter.
And the issue we have in Westport is there is no zoning requirement for views.
Okay, I was curious about that, because this gentleman mentioned something about, you know, not interfering with someone's views.
We, we, there is no requirement in our zoning bylaws that says that, that.
That you can't plus.
That view is a, is a factor.
Is a determining factor.
Now, you know, we will look at each case individually, but, you know, that, that.
And the same issues happened at the other one in stilts, a little bit further down Atlantic Avenue.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
I'm sure it did, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and I know for a fact that the person behind him sold their house because they.
And what they're going to be doing is what they legally have to do, because they're in the flood plain.
Right.
They legally have to put it up on stilts. So that's not the issue, but it's, you know, it's, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to get some feedback on that requirement.
Is it the old beach club?
No, it's, it's on the corner of Howland and Atlantic.
Yeah.
It's, it used to be my aunt's house, the Rogers' house.
So it's next to the one that Jake Talbot rented about ten years ago? The second one in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The first one, right?
The Browns, this is going to be the first one right in the corner.
Yeah.
We're immediately north of that.
Okay.
So it hasn't come from.
It would, it would be a good idea for you to attend the various hearings, conservation and here, if it gets here and so forth.
They've already been in front of the Conservation Commission.
They already have, yes, and I was told they would, they would need to be in front of the zoning board.
Yes, well, they mentioned that at that hearing, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Potter did.
Okay.
If they come before us, you are notified, yes, I'm sure, all of the boards.
Okay.
So we have two sets of meeting minutes, one from November.
Can I, are you here for a certain case, sir, because we only had.
Did two sixty-five work to wrap up?
Yes.
Did that go?
Good.
Pass?
Yes, it did.
Well, you're sealed all good. Took me an hour and a half to get down here.
And you blinked and you missed it.
No.
It was the shortest case we had, and we found in their favor, so everything's good.
No, no, no.
Every lot, no.
All right, well, congratulations.
Thanks. Didn't want to make you sit here any longer than you had to, but you're welcome.
You're welcome to continue.
I'll attend my son's track zoom.
Were there two?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, meeting minutes for November sixteenth. Maria has incorporated whatever comments have been put in here, I think this one is the one I had comments on, right?
One on the.
Sixteenth, I didn't think I had one on the night. Anyway, I'll entertain a motion to approve meeting minutes for November sixteenth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for November sixteenth.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, no, so it's unanimous. Don't we also have November ninth?
Yeah, you should have.
This is October twenty-sixth, unless it's, is it in here?
No, you should have.
Yep, right, under the cloud. Okay, November ninth, again, meeting minutes that were generated, I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November ninth.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, no, so that's approved. Okay, couple of orders of business, we had some correspondence from town council regarding LLC ownership of, of, of property.
That has come before the board?
Yes, remember, we have that.
Off one seventy-seven?
The one on.
Yeah, Wildberry Way.
West, West, Wildberry.
Wildberry Way.
And what he suggested, and I bring this up because there's nothing in our bylaws that say anything about LLC ownership, so what, what Jeff Lake is recommending is that we, we make, that we amend the bylaws slightly to account for this, because there's nothing in there, and there's nothing there that describes what an owner is. So, I don't know, I assume everybody got a copy of all this one.
I thought the only thing I saw in this thing was, was the typo.
Well, there is a typo.
And that one, really, we have to do anyway, one way or another, but I didn't see him suggest.
Yeah, he said, he said that.
I agree, by the way, a hundred percent. You've got to clarify what an owner is in a corporate structure.
As a policy, the town should consider how broad or loose the restrictions are, that's, I'm past it. Okay, section nine, five, four, owner definition, what he wants to do is add an owner definition. And the owner definition is for the purposes of section nine point five, which is, you know, the section that would be pertinent for, for the accessory apartment, actually for either the accessory apartment or the built-in or the.
Primary building.
That whole thing. An owner shall be a natural person, either A, listed as the record, the record owner on deed on file with the Bristol County Registry of Deeds, Southern District, B, the owner of at least, and again, he put fifty percent, but then later he says fifty, twenty-five, ten, whatever number you want, of a business entity, including a limited liability company owning the property, or C, the beneficiary of at least fifty percent of a trust owning the property, so.
Yeah, I think it's fifty percent.
I was thinking more like twenty, because twenty-five, because fifty percent could just be husband and wife.
No, it could be that husband owns fifty percent, wife owns a, so that's at least fifty percent.
Yes, but that means your kids can't.
Or the husband and wife that owns fifty percent, go back.
We have had.
Yeah, I guess maybe we need to.
I.
Yeah, I don't want to do the husband and wife thing either, because, yeah, you're right, okay, because you end up, like, what if it isn't a husband and a wife, but they, you know, have either children or other people that they are part of the LLC, right, but they're the ones who are going to be living in, right? So I guess maybe fifty percent of the LLC has to live in the house? Right, so that would account for a husband and wife that own fifty percent, and the children own the other twenty-five percent of each, let's say, two kids, it would have.
Well, well, what, no, but see.
It would have counted if Ray and I owned the property, and we own, and we own each own twenty-five percent, but now we're fifty percent into the house while we're living together and saying.
Yeah, but say, you know, like in that case, that they want their son to live there. So the husband, so, I mean, that could be like a twenty-five percent share.
If the son had a.
You know, or something like that.
Yeah, we want at least, we want enough of stake in the game.
You want enough stake in the game, you know, you know, right.
And I think, I think maybe we want to do an odd number.
An odd number.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's, this, I don't know why, but it just comes right, I can't articulate why.
Well, I'm just thinking of family units that, that, okay, you have an LLC, generally, it's a husband and wife and the kids or whatever, so I'm just thinking of.
Wasn't there a further question about what, are they, I don't know if he's touching on this with this proposed definition, but what we saw before was they weren't owners, they were managers.
No, no, because they got, they, they, they were a five percent owner, right?
Originally, the attorney had put them down as managers.
Managers, but.
But Jeff said that managers, they don't know.
Yes, so, so they.
Yeah, everybody said we needed the, we needed the articles of corporation, how much ownership they had.
Ownership, so then that's.
Have we seen a document indicating that they're now owners?
Yes.
But a very de minimis amount.
Yes.
Right, and I think that's the problem.
Yes, but we don't have anything to protect ourselves against that right now.
But this, right, we don't have anything to protect ourselves.
That's why we're proposing.
And that's the reason why I think we need to do something like this, it's just a matter of what percentage we think is right.
Well, I also have a further question regarding trusts, and I certainly know, I'm an expert on trusts, but the trusts I've seen don't actually show an ownership of the trust as a trustee and as a beneficiary typically, so I'm not aware of that.
But what do they do for the beach thing? They, they, they don't do it right, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, well.
They basically, anybody who's a beneficiary of trust to get a beach pass, which is not. Basically, anybody who's a beneficiary of trust to get a beach pass, which is not.
But they're not, they're not owners.
They're, no, they're not owners until you're dead.
And that's why I don't want to.
That's correct.
Well, they are. It could be a trust. Like, if I leave my house to my, to my grandkids, then, but I leave it in trust, which is, I'm gonna do, because you don't want to have them fighting over things, they would be owners because then they would become the actually, they would be actual, and, actual, but at first, it, it depends, right? Like, there's a trust that, like, right now, my grandkids get part of the house, and my daughter, my nieces and my nieces, right? But when I die, it'll stay in a trust, but they'll now be owners.
They'll be the owners.
But they're not owners now.
But there's two types of ownership of a trust. You can be an owner, it's, a property can be in a trust and you can still be an owner, a good portion of that owner. So we, we need to think about that.
Yes, I, I think that's.
And I'm okay with, like, a five percent ownership, like in this instance, as long as that person, like, if, like, if it's a trust just for relatives, right? As long as it's like, they're still part of the family unit, then five percent, okay, because, but I think it needs to be more because else, what my problem was, the other property could get fixed by this very easily, by making a renter an owner of a corporate LLC.
Yes, right.
That's what, that was my biggest concern with this one.
Well, I, I think it deserves a little bit more review, you know, before we can really pin it down. Percentage-wise, that's not the whole issue, I don't know. But, but I was concerned about the fact that a trust, I, I'm familiar, they don't have owners. They have a beneficiary and they have a trustee.
Well, it's like, you know, I do the same thing with, with what Sid was, was saying, is that my house, I don't act, my house is in trust. My wife and I are the trust, along with, along with my three sons. If something happens.
As trustees or sons?
So if something happens, if something happens to me, my wife owns it. If something happens to me and my wife, my three sons own it.
Correct, because they're beneficiaries.
They're actually on the mortgage. They're actually on the mortgage.
No, they're, you can be owners in a trust. Not all trusts have, some trusts are, like, mine is only a trust upon death, right?
That's like mine.
You probably have a nominal trust. That means you actually, you've put, you've.
Yeah, a revocable trust.
A revocable trust. That means they're, they're, they're owners no matter what. You can't take them off, even if you.
Well, you can. You can change it.
Yeah, but if they're revocable, that's a different story. Um, so I think we need to think about the types of trusts.
Types of trusts, yes, yeah, okay.
And I can sort of pick some thing around.
Yeah, can you, can you do that?
Then we can bring it to the attorney's sort of.
Yeah, and we need to do this quick because we need to, I want to get this on the article for, um.
For this town meeting.
For this town meeting.
Which is the town meeting, what?
Other than the typo.
Yeah, when's the town meeting?
Well, maybe, but it needs to get through some widgets.
You have to have the things where you can.
This is a fairly straightforward one, so I, you know, I don't think it's, it's a major issue to put this on a warrant.
You're talking about the trust and the, what we were just talking about?
Actually, it's just the definition of owner.
It just might become more complicated. But the other, the other one, I definitely think we should get to the planning board, that proprietary.
Proprietary versus propriety, yeah.
And versus even property, if you, you know, want to misread that too.
Right, right.
And I think that we should get to the planning board as quickly as we can because that's a definite correction.
Yeah, and the LLC, we can do, we can do the trust another time. We can add another owner if we need, you know. I think we should figure out the LLC. Because the trust is a little, I think, a less, less problematic. The LLC, especially an LLC in this one instance, which was, the purpose of the LLC was to invest in real estate, right? Versus a purpose of an LLC is to provide tax shelter for a family. That's, that's two different things, right? Um, so it just, in the, in the instance in which there is an LLC for the purposes of real estate development, there, there, there's an appearance of impropriety that they're really not going to live there. Right? Because that's not the purpose of why they bought it, right?
Well, it's going to become, it's going to become a bigger and bigger issue because more and more investors, or call them, are forming corporations to buy properties, especially, let's say, for example, right now in Bedford, it's happening a lot, where the corporations buying the property, or an LLC, buying a property because of the rail line coming in. And they have no intention of living there, the people in this thing. But if we don't cover ourselves, we're going to have a problem.
And if there's an LLC, then just you put it in an LLC to avoid liability. So I, I put my, like, let's say if I was going to rent my house out for half a year, I would put my house in an LLC so it would cover me from liability if my renters do something stupid, right? Those are different types of reasons why you would have the LLC, but I think with an LLC, especially when its sole purpose is to develop real estate.
Well, I mean, can we then do this as a, as a phased approach? I mean, we can certainly, I, you know, I, I, I think the first part of this, obviously, the, the owner, you know, the owner is the owner, I don't think that's an issue. It, and the, the owner of some percentage of a business entity, including limited liability, owning the property, I think those two parts of it, we can agree on, right?
Yeah.
So.
I think so.
So I think we can at least go forward with that.
With the percentage, though.
But the percentage, and I'm thinking like twenty, twenty-five percent, you know, some, some number that allows at least family.
Yeah, but that, I mean, I think it should be substantial, right? Because.
I, I don't think it should be fifty because then you can't really have, you know, I can't have my son there because my wife and I would be fifty-fifty.
Maybe not. Your wife could be fifty percent and you give your son the other fifty percent, right? I mean, you could.
Yeah.
You could all, you know, you could actually have it as the husband and wife own fifty percent and they give it to, uh, to kids at twenty-five percent each. But cumulatively, the two people who are living there have a thirty percent ownership.
How can the husband, oh.
Right, so they give, like, you got a husband and wife, or a couple, right, who has fifty percent of the business and two kids.
Between the two of them.
Yes, like a cumulative has to have at least like X percentage of the, because you can have two people living in an ADU, right? Only one bedroom, so two relatives living in one bedroom might be kind of creepy, but, um, but, yeah, you could see that. I think it should be more than twenty-five percent. How about thirty-three?
Thirty?
Thirty.
Around. How do you do thirty? That's a.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, it's a, you know.
It is, it's a tough one, right? Because you don't want to make it so onerous, but that's sort of the spirit of the reason why we require you to be owners, right?
Right, but, you know.
For our purposes, we just.
Because when I, when I own something, right, like, that, so if I own something with somebody and I live, but, but, let's say, my dad and I own a house, right? I own, but I, he doesn't live there, I live there. And then I build an ADU for rental purposes, right? It's still at least one owner is in there.
Mm-hmm.
But even those, but yeah, yeah.
But then you're not at fifty percent, you're at thirty-three percent, yeah.
I mean, but then again, then maybe five percent isn't enough.
No, I don't think, yeah, I think five percent is like.
You have one owner representative living in either one of the properties, that covers our criteria, correct?
Yes, yeah, that's why I'm still thinking like twenty-five percent, because that at least gives some flexibility of, uh, you know, a couple, a couple and, and, you know, and a couple of kids.
Enough of skin in the game.
Enough of the skin in the game. It's not five percent that's like, that's like.
Like, you got to give, I mean, that's, could be some.
Skin in the game, I like that. That's.
I think the spirit of, of the bylaw was so that you're, you're not just developing a two, two-family rental property.
Yeah, right.
So it's also possible that you could have two kids and, let's say it was twenty-five and twenty-five. One twenty-five percenter is living in the main house, and one twenty-five percent is a me, I don't know if it's fifty, but the idea is they're, they're family. They're, it's still a part of the.
Right, and this instance is unique only because it's not built yet. This is the first time with Asperd ADU.
Yes, before you go.
Is that maybe something we, you know, need to deal with? I mean, it does make sense, because let's say if I was buying his property, it would be a full intention to have my, the relative live there, right, to take care of. Maybe that's what's being onerous, but.
Yeah, but we did have one that's very, very close to similar of it, was the one in Santa Grove, where he's completely redoing the whole, the main house.
Yeah.
The, he and his family, and then the mother-in-law, somebody.
Yeah, but it wasn't in an LLC, right? So the ownership of it is.
No, no, he was still going to live in, in the property. He was still living in the property.
That's what he said.
Well, it's always that way, right?
To put it in a deed restriction, then at least.
But at least, but at least you knew who the owner was at that point. You could say, you have to live here.
Right, right.
Well, my argument there is, is that I don't think we should be unfair to any applicant to be too heavy on this, living there at our point in time, because anything can happen. I mean, that property could be completely sold, but the.
There's three ownership, right? The, the, the first one is by the deed, and if the deed's an LLC, then we have to have a, the owner or, has to have a certain percentage in the LLC.
What I'm saying is the timing of it is such that, uh, that bylaw about people living in it doesn't kick in until somebody lives in it.
Yeah.
Okay? So at that point, a lot of things could happen. People could die, people could sell things and so forth. So at our level, in, in our hearings, I don't think we should be dwelling on that as much as, other than to tell them that, yes, that's the bylaw and so forth, and then we even now have a declaration of it that gets registered in the registry of deeds. But to try to, um, foretell a future.
Right.
Of what could happen, anything could happen.
I, I get that, but I think we also, to do it as if anything could happen, right? So now, yeah, somebody buys a property with an ADU on it, right, and they buy it in an LLC, and the person who is living in there is a owner of the LLC. We want to have some sort of amount ownership, to make it so it's, that, so that looks.
I think that's necessary in the bylaw. I do think that, because as of the day that they start to occupy that property,
We need to have, we have to enforce it.
It's the enforcement officer.
Yeah, we need to say he's an owner or not, not an owner.
That's correct. But that, but that's, the enforcement officer needs to do that, not us at the hearing. That's my only point, is that.
Well, we got, need to define what an owner is, so then he, so Ralph has something to enforce.
Right.
So that's why we, that's why we, we need to do this, because right now we have nothing.
Yeah.
And I think we're only just arguing about percentage, that's it. And.
I mean, I, I think it should be more, but I'm okay with.
I wonder if, you're okay with twenty-five percent?
I wonder if.
I mean, I think it just is.
You got to start somewhere, right?
I, I want to do it, it'd be somewhat flexible, but like you said, enough skin in the game that.
Yeah.
It's not just, you know, anybody.
But I wonder if KP Law would, would be able to advise us in terms of are there other communities that have a similar thing?
Well, what, what I would do on this then is if we agree to this, I would go back to Jeff and say, here's what we're thinking.
Yeah.
You know, how does this fit in with what everybody else does?
That's, that's what I'm thinking, yes. So that we could get some other ideas on how it really works.
So.
He kind of implied, though, in his email that it was, he was not sure.
Well, yeah, because he said, well, it could be ten percent, it could be twenty-five, it could be fifty-one, it could be whatever you want.
And not every community requires an owner to live in one, they.
Right, you're right.
Right?
Yes.
So we do.
We do now.
Doing.
So.
So.
So I just think we need to get some further advisement on this. And I don't think we should use this particular past example as the guide. I think in general, we need to know.
But all I need to know is, does everybody agree that we should go forward with this as a, as a, an article in the next town meeting?
Well, I think we should aim for the next town meeting, if we can do it, or even get a part of it in.
Well, that's why, you know, that's, you know, that's why I'm, you know, we need to work on this quickly.
And.
And if, you know, you know, and if it turns out to be, you know, like I said, the only issue, the owner of at least twenty-five percent of a business unit, including a limited liability company owning the property, and then forget about, at least at the moment, the, the, the trust part of it. You can still sort of look into that.
That's not, that won't be as tricky because there's, like, each type of trust has its own rules about who's the ownership, and then, that's fine.
In my case, it would be automatic.
I can't think of all of them, right? But I know they, with respect to the Beach Commission allowing trustees to, the way they, the way the Beach Commission has it, like, I could go in right now, and you can go, I don't know if your sons live with you or not, your son could go in with that document and get two beach passes. And I think that's wrong, because, I mean, um.
Right, I didn't see what you made, yes.
So there's, it's just not worded well enough in the beach, and I want to make sure that in this instance, we cover all the types of trusts and all the types of ownership in the trust, and then, then it, then it falls out, right? With how, that means as long as you're an owner, based upon the, the rules of trust A or trust B, whatever types of trust they are, then you are, that qualifies you as an owner. I think that, the trust would be.
Also, what you just said, does that also mean that there could be trusts that, that by the law of trust, it would, it would indicate who's an owner, but the trust itself may not actually use the word owner anyplace.
No, but by, but, but by virtue of.
The type of trust.
Trust it is, would show if you have control, yeah.
By law.
Yeah, exactly. That's why it'll be, that's why it's going to be easier, because once we figure out all the types of trust that we could possibly have a piece of property in, then we can figure out how their owners, you know, are they real owners or just owners, but, you know, eventual owners, like there's.
Right, right.
Like, uh.
If we didn't have it, if, my initial thought was that if KP Law can't advise us on how to redefine who's an owner, I thought, well, maybe we may have to just get rid of the requirement for an owner living there. But that's a terrible thing, because then you, basically, you're just saying, just build a two-family house on.
Then we, then we.
Just one of them can't be more than nine hundred square feet.
Right, and then, exactly, that's what we, all, then we have to instill.
Absolute landlords, I mean, who knows?
And then you have two families own districts, which we don't, I don't think we have, right? Yeah, I mean, I think it's, um, it's really a beneficial owner, right? So like, there's like a, you know, let's say if you had a disabled child and you had a trust for that child, that child is the owner, but the, the child is receiving a benefit from that, and that, that property is also part of that benefit. So that's where they, that would equivalent to be an owner. But in my instance, where it's a revoc, it's a revocable trust, my beneficiaries have no, they have, they have no interest in any of my property. They can change it tomorrow.
Mm-hmm, right.
Like I said to my niece, if you don't come to my family, you're out of the will.
You remember that.
They came?
I was going to go through, like, lessons learned, but I was waiting, but Constance is supposed to be here.
Where does this leave us, though?
Uh, I don't know. Well, like I said.
Do you still want to talk about percentages yet, or you want to wait till you get a little more.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm.
I actually want you to propose twenty-five percent and see if you feel.
I, I, I feel, I feel comfortable at twenty-five percent. It's not a nickel and dime, but it allows some family flexibility.
No.
You know, it's not a modest amount.
That means they're actually working the company, right? I mean, it's like.
Well, you know, you've got, you know, you've got a significant share. It's not just, you know, if it's five percent, you could have twenty of those, right?
Yeah.
And it may not even be a family member.
Yeah.
It may not even be a family member.
Right.
Could be a significant other.
Or just, just, just business partners, right? I mean.
Yes, right. So, I mean, that's what I would, you know, but again, I, you know, I think that's something we can, we can talk with Jeff and see what other.
So before deciding on that, but on the other one, that, that so-called typo, we, I think we really ought to get that to the planning board.
Yes, yes.
Because that's a definite.
Yes, it was, uh.
Proprietary.
Proprietary versus proprietary.
I think this was Constance.
Oh, there you are.
Hey.
How are you?
I'm sorry. Oh, my neighbor lost his dog.
Oh, no.
Chasing. Well, we thought we found her.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, so I was getting ready to leave and, uh.
Well, we had a historically short hearing tonight.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Fifty, well, that wasn't, wasn't anything to discuss, so.
I'm so sorry. I could, I could have come earlier easily. I was getting in the car and he's coming down with a flashlight. He's like, you see Nellie? She always runs down to my house. Anyway.
Okay, um, we were just discussing, we just finished discussing change, uh, proposed articles for the, for the next town meeting to at least identify a definition of what an owner is. As per, Jeff Lake provided us with, with some, with some suggested wording for a ownership, which I'll just read it. For the purposes of section nine point five, so it's just a section that, on accessory apartments, shall be a, a natural person either listed as the record owner on the deed, on file with the Bristol County Registry of Deeds, be the owner of at least, and we're, you know, right now we're talking twenty-five percent of a business entity, including a limited liability company owning the property. He also suggested that we may consider a beneficiary of at least fifty, or some percentage of a trust, and that's where we're, right now, that's, uh, there's a lot of, there's different kinds of trusts, so.
A little more complex.
It's a little more complex. But at least the, the LLC and obviously the, the actual owner, uh, you know, should be identified as the definition of an owner. But then we, they would give us that issue we have with somebody in, like in the case on Wildberry, that the LLC owned the property. And we didn't have anything on our zoning bylaws that said anything about LLC owning, as being an owner, as, in compliance with, with an accessory apartment. So we, we need to, we need to fill that hole.
Yeah, and we also need to not only talk about LLC, there's just any corporate structure, because it could be more than just an LLC.
Yeah, LLC, corporate as far as.
Okay, so, um, that's, and so potentially, we're going to go to the planning board with the suggestions for the, uh, for the next town meeting to, to make these fairly minor changes, but, you know, so. There's also a typo, proprietary versus, you know, propriety versus proprietary. So he suggested we ought to at least. So he suggested we ought to at least correct that. We finished a meeting minutes, the, one other issue I had, I met with the personnel board regarding Maria's position and identified, we went through that list a month or two ago, all the things that she does for us. And I convinced them that her job is more than just a principal clerk, so Maria's gonna work and I'll work with her on identifying essentially a task description of what her present job really entails. What that probably will mean is a different classification of job because it really doesn't fit into administrative assistant anyway because who is she assisting? She doesn't really, no, I'm not, I'm not a paid employee. So she had, you know, so she's, she really, and what I convinced, and which is really true is, is that Maria really does all the work of the zoning board. We come here and we meet, we meet, you know, we get all the documentations and we make a decision and then Maria manages all the rest of it. So we wanna, we wanna portray that in, in the job description, not only but for Maria, but you know, you know, if Maria were to leave, we would wanna get another person who would do that same kind of job. So, you know, it's important not only for Maria, but it's important for us as well. So, and we wanna get that done again so, because it will have to go in front of the town board, in front of the town meeting. The things that we noted was that, well, first of all, she's part-time. Our, our whole budget's only ten thousand dollars a year. I mean, that's, so, you know, any change, and, and it should be fully funded by the petitions that we get. The petition fees cover, should cover all of that, or at least most of that, depending upon how many petitions we get. So it's not a burden to the town, you know, her, her actual position. That's actually one of the few positions we can, you can say that for. So anyway, hopefully we can get something in front of, in front of the town meeting next May or whatever it is to, to upgrade her position to, to identify what she really does. And it may, it may be zoning board manager or something, something other than principal clerk, you know, the more accurately described.
Or zoning clerk and just have a new definition for that versus the principal clerk is defined in, I assume, the personnel.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, right now they have like clerks and they have administrative assistants and she doesn't really fit in either one of those because the, you know, the things that she does are really, in a lot of cases beyond, you know, you know, working with the lawyers, you know, all the things she has to do on a, on a, on a very timely basis, you know, all the legalities that we have to handle. Most of the other clerks don't have to do those kinds of things. So anyway, it's just a matter of listing all the stuff that we do and then we come up with, okay, we're gonna actually look to see what other towns actually call their.
How about administrative coordinator?
I mean, I was thinking of that as well. I mean, it's, because that's pretty much, anyway, that's something.
Zoning, yeah, administrate, zoning administrator, yeah, just maybe administrative coordinator. Cause she kinda coordinates all the administration.
So she just could be the ZBA administry.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. President.
CEO.
Let's see, okay, so anyway, so we're gonna work on that and hopefully, you know, we'll, we can convince a town that, you know, that this, this is a necessary, not only that, but it really doesn't cost a taxpayer any money because it paid for by petition fees. So, last thing I needed, any, oh, before we get on to this, anybody else have any, any other business that we wanna discuss? Cause I wanna just get in, and I don't wanna spend all night on this, I just wanna do like lessons learned from our October meeting. I wanna get that, I just wanna get it all aired out. Oh, yes, one other obviously thing that what I should have mentioned is, and you all know that Jim Waterston resigned effective immediately as of, what, a couple days ago?
As an alternate, alternate member.
So there is an opening, if anybody knows of somebody who would, would want it. There was somebody and, and I, I'm gonna go look in the email, maybe you can do the same, there was somebody when, when Cynthia and Jim came on, there was also somebody else who sent me an email, who sent us an email saying, I would be interested in, in being a member. So it's, but that was like, what is that? How long you been at?
Last November.
Six months, yeah.
What's that?
Last November, so like November twenty, what, say it's twenty, November twenty twenty one.
Okay.
So a little over a year.
We gotta go back and look to see because I do remember there was somebody else, I don't remember the name, that was interested. So, you know, give them an email, say, hey, if you're still interested, let's talk about it. Nothing else? Again, I wanted, I wanna do like a lessons learned from, you know, from recent meetings.
Losing the meeting, going to executive session or?
Um, you know, I, you know, we actually identified an executive session that, and, and since it is personnel related, I think it is still appropriate to do that. Would anybody feel comfortable doing that, Constance?
I'm sorry.
Going into executive session?
I think we should go into executive.
Yes.
Anybody else have any issues with that?
No.
You know, it is, it is personnel.
Well, are we actually gonna be talking about instances and people? Are we just talking about guidelines?
I believe we are.
I think we, we may use that as examples.
We may use that as examples.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think there are these, I think to talk about, given the resignation about a particular person, but I think, you know.
I think executive session is appropriate.
Yeah, I believe so. So then I'll take a.
Well, I'm gonna disagree with that and I would probably vote not to go into executive session because if you touch on that situation, any person involved has the right to be here and, and has the right to even be represented here. And I don't think it's a good idea. I think if we talk about.
Yes.
You know, like guidelines.
Very general. And my, my intention here was.
Difficult to do that.
My intention was to do fairly general lessons learned.
If we can stay away from specifics and people. Because.
Okay with that? Okay, so we'll continue.
I'm not, just so you know, I'm not okay with that because I want specific questions answered.
Yes, but then.
Then maybe.
Well, I think Barbara did, actually, Barbara did mention something at the last meeting that she wanted something addressed and that person is here.
What, what did you say? Oh, I see, oh, different.
So, so.
I just, as Roger said, I wanna get this over with.
Yes.
Have a discussion and I think it's more appropriate in executive session than it is in open.
Uh, yes, but we didn't advertise it like that.
Well.
Well, you've got it on the minute.
Yes, but it was, it was specific.
Well, it is still a personnel issue.
Let me, let me just take a look.
According to Barbara.
Yeah, what is the?
Discuss, I'm not gonna read that one out right now. Yeah, I think it could, no, won't work.
I think it'll work.
Associate member.
Oh.
Oh.
But why would you do lessons learned today?
Did you, have you, have you all seen the guidance from KP Law on executive session?
Yeah.
Cause if you look through that, it's very clear that you can't discuss people without their having an opportunity to be here and so forth and notification ahead of time so that they can.
Okay, so I'm gonna go through then at a top level.
Maybe we could do what you're asking for by advertising in the future.
Right, right. Yeah, cause, cause we didn't, we didn't list it that way.
I thought we discussed this at the last meeting, that we addressed this this week.
Yeah. Yeah, but the way this went out, it was identified specifically as.
It went out like it did last time.
So, okay, so I'm gonna go through, and again.
Can we discuss it in open?
We are gonna discuss this in open, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be general. It's gonna, and, and really, what I really wanna get across is, is, you know, we, you know, there, you know, we have issues with, you know, with, with, with the meetings and, and I just wanna make sure we all understand how to get back on the same page again. For instance, we have, we have to follow the procedural rules and regulations that, that we've identified for ourselves. And I try to follow those rules and regulations to the best of my ability. If somebody finds that I am not, I expect that somebody is then gonna step up and say, that by, that's not against, that violates our rules and regulations and we should therefore, and then, and, you know, at least identify that to me so that I make sure that I stay on the rules and regulations. Now, having said that, rules and regulations, I look at the rules, and it's something that we need to discuss as a group. I look at the rules as one of two things. Either it is cast in stone, inviolate, we have to abide by every word and, and I'm okay with that. Or there may be cases where, in a particular case, we may wanna adjust the, our, our procedures on a per-case basis. And I don't mean the major things like how many people it takes to vote or, you know, all those things that are stipulated by state law, but, but there are a lot of things in there that are our own way of doing business. And it may be that in, in a, in a given case, we may want to, you know, make an adjustment to that on a, on a per-case basis. And I think in that case, if the whole board voted to make a change.
Then it's okay.
Then it's okay.
Yeah.
And the other option is follow the rule no matter what it is. So, and, you know, I, I think the, our rules and regulations should be a, should be more than just guidance, but not necessarily etched in stone. I, I think we need to have a little bit of flexibility, but only for those things that are not regulated by the state or mandated, you know.
Yeah, we can't, we can't go against that, right?
I can't go.
It's a, like how many, who votes, right?
Who votes? That's a, that's a good thing.
So.
You bring it up. If the chair says, I want these five people to vote, and if somebody says, gee, you know, I really think somebody else should vote, we talk about it.
Well, there's also instances in which, let's say, right now it's the, if all five of you are here, you all vote and if one of you aren't, then I get to play today, play today, right? So there could be an instance in when, when one of the five of you, not for a true conflict, I.
But just for being uncomfortable.
That I, for whatever personal reasons, I feel that I can't be unbiased.
Right.
Right?
Yes, yes.
In that decision.
Yes.
Just for whatever reason, right? You know, you don't like the fellow purple and now this is gonna be purple, I, there's no way I'm gonna vote for it, right?
Yes, right.
So I think if it's in, you know, something that, you know, anybody can step down from voting who should be voting if they feel that they don't, can't do an unbiased, render an unbiased opinion.
And when is that decision made? Generalizing, and you know what I'm talking about.
Why don't you just have at it?
No.
Well, because I'm been told this is a very general meeting.
No, I think what we should do, I, I was thinking about this and I think it does really stem from before, we got a couple meetings, it stemmed from the first meeting we had on whatever property it was, said subject property, in that we didn't know the rules. We thought we need, they needed a variance, but they really needed to find it.
Yes, yes.
And if we would've known that they needed only a finding and not a variance, that meeting would've been over that day.
Yes, yes.
And I think that's the first issue. We have to know what it is and what, that we have a proper, I think, cause we all would've avoided everything. And Jim, which will be here, we'd all be happy, happy.
You know what, I think we could've avoided a lot of the stuff because in Ralph's letter, it said, we do not need a variance, we're here for a finding.
Right.
And that letter was read prior to the hearing being started.
So I think one thing, and then there's also the issues of what the standard for certain things, the variance, the special permit and the finding, those are all, that's all dictated by the state. We can't make our own rules up, so.
And the majority of our rules, if you read the state rules, they're, they're a mirror of that.
Yeah, and it says it, and I read our rules again and it says, these are readied from Mass General, blah, 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 right? So we can't go from that. So I think then, I think what we need to do is educate ourselves to, okay, make sure we're, we're deciding on the right thing and then understand what each of the legal factors are for all of those, right? And then till we do that, and I would suggest maybe at the end of every meeting, we just, we always know what's happening next. So we're like, we're all on the same page when we go into the next, next meeting. Cause I think, you know, we look like fools when we didn't know if we needed a variance or a finding, right? And I think that's how they, that's how they felt, right? They were like, well, you're switching, like you're playing the shell game. First you say they need a variance and then you say you needed a finding and then this is okay and you can't do this. And what, and what the rules of a non-conformity, like, like, you know, I always thought you had to keep a leg up, right? But that's changed, right? So we need to know that, and we all need to be on the same page. I think we're all, we're working on different assumptions of what we thought a finding was and a non-conformant, a non-conformant situation.
But I don't think we're gonna get to the point where we're always a hundred percent, as things come up in the meeting.
Yeah.
Sometimes that goes, ooh, you know, that, that might change, that may.
Well, the paperwork might not be correct.
Yes, yeah.
But I think what, like, you know, to the point of where, but we really need to know what we're dealing with and we also need to know how we're supposed to be deciding on these things. And I think that would alleviate seventy five, would have alleviated at least eighty percent of what occurred over the last five years.
Constance, do you mind us, do you mind talking about issues from the, at the October meeting?
Obviously Barbara is just chomping at the bit to do it.
So, okay.
I just wanna get it out in the open.
I just.
Go for it.
I, let me just start, start, start this off. There is no provision in our bylaws that allow a member to assign their vote to somebody else. Now, knowing that now, do you agree that what you did was wrong?
Uh, I don't know if it was wrong, it was, it broke a rule.
Well, that makes it wrong.
Well, not necessarily. Uh, you know, there's moral implications of it as well. I was extremely uncomfortable with how things were coming down.
Yes.
And, and I also really did not feel well. I had gotten a flu shot that, that afternoon and I had terrible headache and I just was not feeling well and I didn't like the whole pile on. And I also believe, and I still believe, that, and you'll have to excuse this, I did not for anything, I'm doing chemotherapy on my face and I look like crazy. It's like Rudolph, you know what I'm saying? But anyway, plus I had my shot today, my booster yesterday and I've been, I've been chilled, so excuse me, I'm not quite together, but, um, but I, I, I felt that in the meeting beforehand, the one that Jerry shared, that our colleague had a very interesting line of inquiry and brought up some things along with town council that we had not considered before. It was a different kind of inquiry. And, and I thought that his, um, his contribution was really worthwhile. And I believe that if anybody was voting on it, between, that I could do something about, between me and him, I thought he would be the better person for the conversation. Plus I didn't, what?
Good, good.
Plus I did not like the way the whole thing came down and I did not want to be a part of it. So I wa, I was just going to step back, I wasn't going to leave the meeting, but I was told that I couldn't do that, that I had to accuse myself. And I didn't want to do that because then the line of inquiry or the conversation that could have been brought to it was gonna be shut down. So that's where I was like, everything, everything happening, I was just like, okay, well, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna leave now and now you need an alter. It's unfortunate that it didn't work out where.
Yes, we all know what happened.
Took us up on that because I really thought that he had some things to add. And I have been doing quite a bit of research since then about this particular case. And there are a number of things that if we're gonna really look at lessons learned, that we need to look at in a much more, in a deeper and in a way that we get information, we don't get information from how it comes through the system, from ComCom, Board of Health, building inspector to us. And there, with this particular case, was a lot of information that we never had, but[1760.31] But, through our colleagues poking around, was about this close to getting into it. But we did, but we never heard about it, and we still, and you still don't, haven't heard about it. So I've been going back through some files, and looking at some stuff from all of them. And, um, and I would like to, a, a couple of things, but first of all, let me just go back to the original question. I didn't know there was a rule that you could not leave.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't know there was a rule. Now I know there's a rule, okay, so I broke the rule.
Okay.
I mean, you, I think there's a rule, you can't excuse yourself, if, like, let's say if all of a sudden you got a call and your wife was in a car accident.
Oh, yes.
Excuse yourself, right?
Yes, but-
I mean, like, there, and then I think our new idea of that, is the voting members are the board, unless somebody feels that they can be biased, and then this is, is you felt that you, a, a, after all the events that occurred that evening, you didn't even feel comfortable enough to be voting, because you-
No, I was really turned off by the whole thing.
Yeah.
And I just wanna say this, because, um, in my opinion, the fact that you got up and left when you did, right before the vote, I believe it was inappropriate. Um, if you were not feeling well, and I don't know how you were feeling that evening, I really think you could've stayed an extra five minutes, saw the case through, whichever way you decided to vote, and then excused yourself from the rest of the meeting. That's what I would've liked for you to do. But it was very obvious that you didn't like the way things were going, and instead of doing the hard job, you got up and left. And you didn't leave in a pleasant way. I didn't appreciate that, uh, it bothered me, it's bothered me right, right along. And that's why I wanted to talk about it, to see if you would've done it differently now that you saw how things panned out. And last week, with Roger saying he didn't know if he was gonna stay, because, um, he didn't feel like we were, what, a, a team anymore. That really bothered me, because this man, as well as Jerry, put their heart and soul into this.
I agree, yeah, and I think we all agree, I think that-
And I would like to know if, if you would've done anything different, or do you still stand on the fact that it was okay to get up and leave when you did, because you didn't wanna deal with it? Cause your job, as well as our jobs, is to deal with it. We listen, we take everything in, and we make a vote based on our rules and regulations, on the objective data. And I, I, it just bothers me that you just up and left, and we all know what happened, everything else, um, you know, the rest is history.
It was the, you were trying to correct the situation, and unfortunately, I don't think anybody that could've seen it really go out.
What else happened, but you kinda started that, um, ball rolling down the wrong hill. But, that's my opinion, that's what I wanted to get out. I don't think it was, your actions at that time were appropriate, and I wouldn't wanna see that happen again. As somebody who sits in on these meetings, I don't want any of you to get to that point, and say, "I'm not gonna participate, and out I go."
And I think that goes for all of us.
Yes, I would, I wouldn't want anybody.
Yeah, this is, this is not just, we're not just picking on Constance here, this is a, you know, all of us, I mean, uh, we try and not get emotional about this, but that's not, that's-
Sometimes we do.
Sometimes that's hard, I mean, sometimes this can be a stressful job, and sometimes you just wanna pack it in. But, our job is to, is to look at the facts and make-
Follow rules.
And, and, and- And make your own decision based on how you feel, and, 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 you know, everybody has their own way of looking at things. And, we all have to respect everybody else's opinion. And I think that's what's the most important, is that, I may not agree with you, or you, or you, but, but I certainly agree that, that you have a right to your decision.
Yes.
And I respect your decision.
But I didn't-
I don't care if everybody votes against me, or everybody votes with me, that's not the point. The point is, that the majority rules on this, and that's the way it's supposed to work, and we all oughta respect everybody else's, uh, comments and opinions, and-
Well-
And we try to do that.
And just treat everybody else-
I don't think, I don't think our colleague was being respected for, before, um-
There were a lot of issues going on there, with repetition-
Just because he wasn't voting doesn't mean he weren't listening to what he was saying, that's the whole point.
I'm not talking about that particular meeting, I'm talking about-
I think we're getting a little-
We're, we're getting, we're getting off on this, so-
Well, I just wanna, I'll shut up after this, but I just wanna say, I do respect everybody's opinion, you vote yes, you vote no. Okay, so be it, we all made our decisions. But he did not respect the fact that you chose to get up and leave that meeting at the time, and I will not say another word.
Can we all agree that, we all stick this thing out, that when, when, when we're assigned to vote, we stay until we vote? I mean, is that, is that too much to ask? I don't think so.
I think we should, that's our job.
I mean, I think that's, you know, and if you have a problem beforehand, we can always do, like I said. If you feel this is gonna be an issue, you can ask to be, re, re, uh, to be, to have an alternate takeover for you, you know, or if, if I, you know, actually, the way it would work is that the five regular members will always be voting members unless one of us doesn't attend, and then-
At the vote, at the time of voting.
And then Cynthia will be the, uh, will be the, the alternate vote. But it's, it's important that we all, you know, stick this out, and, and, you know, and, and work through it. I mean, I, I understand, these things can get, you know, can get, uh, tense. But, it's, it's our job to, you know, to make a rational decision.
It was very clear where the vote was going, there was no harm, no foul, and, and-
That doesn't matter, that is a moot point, it doesn't matter.
What was interesting, what was important to me, was that a certain process and debate and inquiry be able to happen. And I felt like that was shut down.
But it wasn't, because the, the meeting was closed already.
The meeting was closed.
Jim could, uh, the only, the only other stuff was-
Meeting was closed, there can't be any more discussion.
There, there couldn't have been, that meeting was closed, there was no further discussion, and it was actually a-
And by, by the way, that's another point that we talked about, potentially, um, uh, voting to change the way we do business. Now, I can actually see a point where we close a meeting, something else comes up as we're deliberating, where we may want to reopen it during the meeting, and, uh, the state allows that. But I think that's something that, again, is something that we can vote on-
Yeah.
And say, gee, we just found this out.
Cause I would've liked-
Let's, let's take a vote to reopen the meeting, so that we can get the information-
And into the record, because I would've really liked to have attorneys for both sides' information in the record. Because if it wasn't in the record, and if it, let, let's, let's say it didn't, if everyone was, we'll appeal. Either, either party, right, I mean, the, but I think the community members can appeal or do something, they can throw out someone or suit. Or, let's say if we voted against it, then the homeowners would've appealed. Not having the, the opinion of their council and the opinion of the community's council and the record could've harmed us. So I think we should, there should be an instance where we can reopen the meeting. But the thing is that, I watched that three-hour thing after the fact, because I was-
Glutton for punishment.
Yes.
I watched it twice, so that's-
I think we all watched it a few times.
And-
Wait, what are you talking about?
I watched the September twenty-eighth meeting, a three-hour meeting, which I wasn't on here for. And I gotta say, and you do, you do it, you did a very excellent job of carrying the meeting. And I have to say, that, um, and I can't speak of the person, but I think there was some, it was clear that there was a member on the board, or more than one member of the board, let's keep it a thing, that didn't know exactly what they were supposed to be deciding on. It was clear, it was like, what are we deciding on here today? And I, I kept asking what those, that, that, and I think there was two ways I could've read that. Either the first, the individual kept repeating and asking for town council to re-reread what this, the, um, standard for, for finding was, I don't know if they were doing it for the benefit of the group of the public, or themselves, it was really unclear to me. Um, but I think, the meeting was closed, and I think we, all of you had heard the comments from all the board members and, and everything. And I think you all, I think we have to trust each other that you took all those things into, um, consideration. And the rules are the rules, and all the board, or, the, the, the board proper gets to vote. And to dispute that, unless you're gonna change it, then it, it shouldn't have ever even, it shouldn't have festered to that.
But, one, one thing that, procedurally wise, that, um, that has come up a couple of times, is there should not be a motion until I call for a motion. What, what's important, after we close the hearing, we discuss. And, there, there, there shouldn't really be a motion to do anything until, until the chair says, okay, I will now accept a motion, because I, we, you wanna hear everything without somebody making a motion prematurely.
Right.
I think it's important that everybody get their thoughts out before somebody just throws a motion out. And, and so, and that's what the chair is supposed to do, is orchestrate that. And then you know, you get a feel for what everybody is, is thinking, and then say, okay, now we're ready for a motion. Because otherwise, you just get a motion thrown out before everybody's had a chance to do something-
Yeah.
And talk, and then now you're, you're arguing about the motion that's, that's been made, rather than discussing-
The issues at hand.
All the issues at hand before and before it was made.
And I think, I think the feeling that if you aren't voting, that your opinions don't matter, I find highly offensive, right? I think all of our opinions matter, and it is a matter of who votes. So if you're saying that, you were saying that the vote was going a certain way, and you were trying to exclude someone from voting, I, then, then we're not, then, then there's no, as I think that you said, there's no trust among us, like, or, or no respect for among us. That I, you know, if I don't respect your, I mean, that means I'm not respect, if you, if you say that you're throwing a vote in a certain way by doing something, that means you don't trust everybody else to actually listen to you, what you're saying. And I think we all need to trust each other, that we're all listening to what we're all saying, and take that in consideration on the vote. And I don't think who's voting is all that important. I think as long as our ideas and our thoughts and, and, and that certain associate member does, had brought things to, um, you know, good, profered questions throughout the, um-
The three hearings.
All the hearings, he's been on, right? And I, and I, and I, what, what startled me most, and, and, and was the meeting in between the two meetings, when it was said that the neighborhood isn't-
Well, I didn't really, I didn't really wanna get into particulars, right, cause that's-
No, there was, well, something was about a neigh, that the neighborhood is gonna be changing to what is becoming, right? That this isn't changing the neighborhood, the neighborhood is gonna become to this. And I think that's what you have to really appreciate, right? Like, there's always gonna be a first kid in the block that's gonna stir up the pot on a street.
Yeah.
But, there's always gonna be a first person, like, so us stopping that from being that first person, when we're all not on the board, something else is gonna be that first person, and then, we're not being fair to everybody.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I really wanna focus though on, on, on our procedures, uh, you know, how, how we manage, how we manage ourselves, because it's, you know, it's, what, you know, what, what, what I don't wanna get the feeling is that, is that, you know, you know, people are trying to pressure people to vote, or they're, you get one vote, how everybody else votes is their job. And that's the way you have to look at it. I have twenty percent of, of, of the, of the vote for the, for the zoning, and that's all I have. I only have my one vote. Everybody else gets their vote, and whatever they vote is, is, you know, is, is their responsibility. I, you know, and, I mean, I know there was a case where I was the only one voting against something, and I said this before. And I have absolutely no problem with that. And I congratulate the person when they, when they actually won it, but-
But you knew that it was gonna pass.
I-
That's neither here nor there.
He is, he has to have signed it.
No-
Oh, no, I, I do not agree with you, Constance.
No, because, because we're all in at the same time, I didn't know what was there.
He interpreted it his way, I remember, it was the solar panels down on Drift Road, right, for, yeah.
I even forget which one it was.
It was, I remember.
Yeah. Well, anyway, all I'm getting at is, this is not a contest.
No.
This is not a contest, we don't win and lose.
I don't feel it's a contest.
We don't win and lose, it's not like, it's not like if you vote against me, that, that, that there's something wrong with it. It is, I have a, you know, I have a thought process, everybody has their own thought process, and they are all valid.
I think we've mentioned this before, and I think you made that point before, and I agree with you completely.
Yes.
Um, but I don't think we have to beat a dead horse.
Okay, okay.
I think they're more important, I think there's some really important issues that we do need to talk about, though, in, in this.
Before we get to that, just a couple of things, uh, we certainly, open communications-
I'd like to get back to your point, uh, that you started about, you said, if we wanna go outside the guidelines-
Yes.
We wanna vote.
I, I-
All I wanna do is make sure that we're, we're clear, that when we do decide that, if that becomes our way of doing it-
Well, first of all, yeah.
Just, we indicate what, uh, what vote, are we talking majority, are we talking about-
It's gonna be majority.
Two majority, or the unanimous, I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Well, first of all, there's everybody wanna do that, and we, we need to vote to do that.
That's why I'm asking.
So-
You typically do that before the case, to tell us which category it falls in.
Well, when, when we come to a situation to say, here's what the rule says we do, and it, and we, and somebody, I don't care who it is, says, you know, I don't think that's appropriate for this petition, and we need to discuss that. And, then we discuss it as a board, and if the majority feels that in fact, an adjustment to that procedure for that case is appropriate, then that's what we do, and that's, that's all I-
It's fine, as long as we know the majority.
But, and, and, but, but we need to vote on the- Right.
We, we've been saying the board votes to do it.
Right.
But we didn't say by what, so.
Yes, we did, but is there every, I'm gonna, I wanna take a vote.
We gotta put in write, we gotta put in writing, first of all, so that we can, we can-
Correct.
We can, uh, figure out what percentage of voting-
Yes.
And I think just the majority.
Majority, if the majority of the, of the members-
Are we allowed to stop, to step out, like, let's say if there was a problem, like, we didn't, like, all of a sudden we realized we didn't, like, some, like, we didn't understand a rule or something, are we allowed to step out as a group and discuss just the rule?
No.
Step out of the room and discuss it-
Just to discuss the rule, like, like, you know-
Without the petitioners and the cameras.
You know, undersell, we all undersell, so we're all-
No, because, because that would then, that would, that would, that would tend to, tend to think that the pub, you know, that we're excluding the public.
But the thing is, when we're debating, it should be something or something, look, we're just like fools.
We're not in an open meeting anymore at that point, too.
If we're, if we're in an open meeting, then we're-
But we're not, we're not talking about-
But they don't know that.
Yeah.
That's the thing is, they don't know that.
I think before any meeting we vote, like I said earlier, before Constance voting, we all need to sort of know what we're voting on, what the standards are, so we're on the same page, so we're not, you know, looking on, looking for what's in front of the public.
I don't think we should be veering from the rules.
No.
You know, if we veer today, next week, one comes in front of us and says, well, you did it last week.
Well, that's the reason why I, you know, like I said, I can go either way on this, but I, but I think there, that our rules are really good, but I don't think they are perfect. And I think that there are some cases where, um, where overriding that, uh, our procedure is, uh-
Because we don't think it's perfect, I think maybe, should we all just, did what we did last year, was go through those rules again, and even make some comments, our own thoughts?
Well, I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do that event, you know, again, but-
I think that's the best way, to sort of see where, you see a hole that perhaps is what we're always sort of going around.
Well, I mean, that's another way handling this, is, is do another run-through of the-
Yeah.
Rules and procedures, to see if there's, um, not only inconsistencies, but areas that, you know, that, that could be improved on.
Yeah, cause it's been a year, it's been a year that, you know, we've been working with the new revised procedures, you know, but, and those are the procedures, and then there's also, I think, the zoning rules, that we just all, that really need to know what those are. And some of them, we can't quiver on, right? I mean, you know, the, the standard of a finding is the standard of a finding, we don't get to decide that, the courts did. And it's very clear what, how we have to apply that, we don't get to apply our opinion, I, you know, I-
So, so would we, would the board rather than review the rules and procedures and, uh, make recommendations for changing them, rather than- So in this particular case, we can just say, like, for instance, the voting, the voting, you say, the, the standard is for regular members, however, uh, you know, with a majority vote, um, an alternate can be selected instead. I mean, that's, I'm just, for instance. Uh, same thing potentially with closing. I think there was something in there already, but, I mean, so, well, obviously, there's a lot of things we can't change, because it's state law.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, you know, certainly I can take a stab at it.
And I think that was part of, I think some of the issues here, and I think that-
I think that would solve things.
That I don't think we all appreciated what was really the law that we couldn't change. And that we couldn't vote just based on what we think the law should be. We have to, you know, we're, we're stuck with-
Okay, I think I've talked enough, but, you know, I, I just wanna get us to the point where we're acting as a team again. We're not, uh, you know, and, and we all respect what everybody else says. And, you know, and we try to keep this at a professional level, uh, you know, so that, so that, you know, we can all, you know, get through this process as painlessly as possible. So, okay, I, I think that reviewing the procedural rules and regulations is probably, probably an appropriate thing to do. It's been, it's been a little while, and now that we have a lot more experience with it, you know, we can come up with a, but, and all, and all it requires is a, a majority vote of the board to, to approve a change. Constance, you wanted to say something?
Well, I, um, yeah, I, I think that it was very clear, um, throughout the several hearings that we had with this particular case, that, um, there was a lot of confusion among board members. And as to, um, the scope and application of, um, of the zoning bylaws, there was one we're talking about, um, not substantial, um, and, um, and I think that town council, you know, gave us some misleading, uh, advice here and there. I think, I think even he was a bit confused, it was, we were back and forth with it. Um, I, uh, I think that our- Um, I I think that our propensity to talk about how something fits into the neighborhood. Uh, oh, well, you know, there's two, that one, there's, it's not the first two-story house in the neighborhood and this and that. And I think that that does us more harm than the good, I think that it confuses, not, it confuses, certainly it confuses us.
It confuses the issue.
Because it's like, well, are we, are we talking about aesthetic issues or how it fits into a neighborhood or are we not? And and I know it's like you're only allowed to say that, I guess, you know, if you're gonna vote favorably, not if you're not gonna vote, you know, it's weird, it's just.
I don't think you're just saying, I think I said that in my my advice, we shouldn't be saying that. I think I think it's human nature that we do, 'cause we wanna sort of.
We just wanna get a feel for.
We wanna, no, we wanna also validate, like, oh, this is a great project, well, this is gonna look wonderful. We like, we always want to say something positive, I think it's just your human nature and I think that's why we do it. But I think we all need to control ourselves and not say, we think this, you know, they, we don't, we shouldn't comment on the aesthetics. We should just say, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or whatever the standard of the variance is and what the standard is for the special permit. And stick with that and don't like, don't say anything else, don't say, I, you know, I like it or I don't like it or, you know.
I think it's very confusing for the people, the public at large, that they are like, well, they get a different, you know, perspective. Or, you know, they start thinking, well, maybe there can be decision made on something like that. Um, and so I I think that's, we we need to step back and we need to look at that. We need to look at the way that we talk about that, I think we really need to visit revisit that zoning bylaw. I think it's a difficult one, it's it's written in a way, so.
Yeah, it sucks.
And I, you know, it and and so and I also, I had hoped, I thought that, what's her name? Elizabeth Grossman that sent us the, her letter that was sent to us. I thought it raised a lot of really, some really good questions. And and I had hoped that we could discuss some of what she raised, some of the the, I thought, really good points and questions that she raised at a future meeting. But I was told, no, it's gonna be, it's just stick it in the file, we're not gonna respond. And I'm like, why aren't we responding to that? First of all, as a committee, as a board, don't we have the obligation to respond to somebody that takes, a a member of the public that takes the time to actually put together a letter like that? That's very well considered.
Yeah, I mean, I read the letter, but I didn't see in there where there was, this was like an information letter, as far as I read it. I didn't take it as.
It was in zoning issues, objective zoning issues, I don't think she was addressing.
I don't know, I thought there were some in here that were worth clarification. And I mean, maybe not changing, but clarification and, you know, but so and so I asked, you know, could we talk about that? I was like, no, we're not gonna talk about that.
I would have liked to respond to her because I think what she was asking for is for clarification of the rules. And I think we do say that this is the, it's sort of like the stilts, we have no, we have nothing to say about the stilts, I hate them, we all hate them. Um, but the still, like putting houses on stilts.
We we can't. Pilements, they're not stills.
Well, but, you know, whatever, but like, I, even though, I I guarantee, nobody in this room likes the pilings, right? But unfortunately.
That's what you gotta do.
It's what we gotta do and with with the with Grossman's letter, I think she was looking for truly clarification of what the rules are. And I think that that, I think that sort of goes back to what I said earlier, I think that, you know, I think when we open up the meeting, chairman. That we state the legal standard to the public of what we're voting on. And then they're, they they'll have more clarity of how, what are we gonna take into consideration when um we vote?
Well, I mean, that's, if you notice, that's what I did.
Yeah, today, yeah, right.
And and that and that's a lesson learned and and that's a, you know, that's a good comment because.
I'd like to chime in on that, because when I read that letter, I I was very pleased to receive that letter. And I I thought it was thoughtful and I thought it was thought provoking. And I agree with Constance and I think that that's the kind of thing that we should just talk about. And maybe clarify things, nothing, not necessarily changing any rules or anything, but but I think it it gave us room for for thought and discussion. So personally, at some future meeting, I think we should take the time to do that. And and go over the specifics of of that, the things that she talked about. But had we done that, I don't think it would have changed my view of of the decision that was made that night. But I I really think that we should lay a lot of this stuff out on the table and talk about it. It it could lead to some some clarifications or changes or whatever. I always get concerned because very often we don't get, in my opinion, an opportunity for adequate legal counsel. And sometimes it's it's just what the what the rules say. And very, very often, it's not what the courts have decided, you know, with case law, that takes a little more research and so forth. So so I I think we don't have the benefit of of adequate. Counsel, which I think leaves to some of the things you were talking about.
I think it's adequate training, right? And then a lot of towns require their board members in planning and zoning to actually get trained on how to interpret these things.
When was the last time any of you got trained on?
We don't.
Ethics.
Is that only?
Anything you do.
Yeah, but I'm talking about.
No, I've been looking, right, 'cause I've been thinking if there's any sort of materials that could help us understand how we're supposed to rule on these things.
Organizations of, you know, planning board and zoning board.
There's not much zoning stuff, right? I can't find, I can't find any much on zoning, I did find a little presentation.
Mostly the planning stuff.
I did find a little presentation from another town that they were trained, they gave the plant, planning and zoning boards, where they thought was helpful. And and I, you know, I can sort of, once I, you know, can incorporate in the meeting, executive meeting, that became non-existent.
I think we ought to take the opportunity to take a letter like that and and do it. We may have other thoughts on on things, like I mentioned tonight, corporations now begin to be owned as well, how's that gonna affect us?
Yeah, that's a very interesting question.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, thank you, Jerry, I appreciate that, 'cause I mean, I think she brings up some things that are that are.
But nothing we could do, I think she brings up some very good points, but nothing that was really in the purview of the zoning board, I mean, I think.
Well, I, well.
What it comes with this, I think the only things in the zoning, the the zoning board was, I think she was begging for some clarification upon the rules, right? And why that it seemed that things were flipping and flopping and then, you know, then she goes into the, you know, preserving the neighbors and that, that's the, that's the historical commission issue, that's not us. You know, they, you know, they can take the heat for that, they take plenty of heat that way, right? But, you know, is there a process that she could, and I think she was looking at, you know, for help, how could they maybe stop this in the future? How, you know, right, you know, I agree, I thought I really wanted to respond to her, so she could actually, I think, I think she was really asking for some guidance.
I think she also alluded to something that I've been looking at in different, some different files. And she alluded to that the way that this process works. Sometimes misstatements, maybe purposefully misstatements, or information sort of gets lost in the shuffle. Because it starts off at CONCOM and then Board of Health and then, you know, and and in between, we don't, nobody has. There's no, there's nobody that looks at it in total after it's gone through each little piece mill. And things get lost or misinterpreted or outright, you know, presented that aren't correct or aren't true. And and we and we don't really have any recourse or we don't know that information, like, there there is a real, there's a real issue about the septic system. And and there can be, especially if they come back for for an apartment, which is obviously what they're wanting to do. You know, the way they're building that garage and then also, you know, for above, you know, another room that could be turned into a bedroom.
But that's, that's, that's not, the system isn't us, unfortunately, I get, I get.
But but there is, but that is something that got lost in the shuffle, the way that it was presented to the Board of Health was not truthful. Uh, and and so it was, yeah, but but.
That's not, that's the Board of Health, they said.
But but, you know, there is a piece of that, and and I, I mean, you know, this is done, this case is, but there is, lessons learned. There is a piece of that that might have actually, not that it would have changed it, might actually have changed people's perspective on what was more detrimental to the neighborhood. In terms of volume of residency, in terms of, in terms of how many bedrooms you can have, how many, you know, so, I mean.
But that's still not in our lane.
But but see, that's the problem, is that it's not in our lane, but we don't, but because everybody is like, do it here.
Everybody has their lane, yes.
Here, then there's no one at the end that has the information to look at and say, okay, so, we're making this decision. But back two agencies ago, you know, there was a problem there. Uh, is that, have, is that been dealt with or and and how we're doing and how we're putting the conditions and stuff, are we taking that into consideration?
See, and that's, but that's where we have to be careful. We have a job to do at zoning Board of Appeals, we don't have a job to do as a health department. We don't have Ralph's job, so we can only do our part of the job.
Well, I I know, and that's what we all say.
And it may be frustrating.
But that's just the way that, that's unfortunate way it works.
And unfortunately, it's Ralph that actually responsible for putting it.
I don't know if if we can make it any better, if we can change it, but, you know, maybe, you know, maybe in some complicated cases. A case could be made for someone, for us to bring in a a representative from the from the Board of Health. To talk about a particular issue that's sticky and that, you know, and how they, yeah.
But then you're accusing them of approving something that they shouldn't have approved of, so, I mean, maybe.
Well, no, not necessarily, I mean, you, you know, and, yeah.
Could we ask for, could we, I mean, when they fill up permanent and they've got, not everybody has to go through CONCOM and and the Health Department. But and I think when we had the, the, the ADUs, we require the septic, so we do require something from the the Board of Health. So if you're doing, putting a package and zoning is sort of the last step before you build a permit, right? That's just sort of the natural progression of things, right? So can we say in the package, we wanna see all your submissions to all your other agencies in the town, so we can consider.
Actually, I know that in a lot of cases, they go to zoning first.
Well, okay, I mean, in this case, it's.
Other than the one with the, for the septic.
Yeah.
This is just a really complex case and, you know, and and we really were, I think, confused over it and I think we got some confusing advice. And, you know, I, maybe we'll never have another case like this.
I mean, it's funny, 'cause I mean, we've, we've dealt with a whole bunch of findings and this is the first one that was that complex, that had that much.
And there was a lot of emotion in the room from the butters and everybody else.
All the other findings we've ever had, have, oh, this is great, this is wonderful, and everybody's, everybody's happy, it's, you know.
But the stilts too, the 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 piling is what's between.
So it struck us really different because it's like, geez, findings are usually fairly, you know, you know.
But I think it's as to how we as a whole were a little bit unclear at many times during the process. Were versus when they had the 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 case a couple of weeks ago when the 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 butters were complaining about, can't you do something about the pilings? And we just said, we shut them down.
They said, no.
That's the law.
That's law.
And I think that's sort of how we need to attack any time when the audience or the butters are going off the island. That and asking us to change something that we actually can't change, I think we just need, like, again, learning's hard, we gotta take a stronger hold on. No, we can't change that, that's not in our purview, if you got a problem with that, talk to your senator and get the, the law to change the messages.
You know, you're doing what they are required by a law to do.
And tonight, you answered that gentleman's question about the view, no, we do not make decisions based on the view, end of discussion.
That's a question, correct.
But see, that was an example tonight, that fellow after our meeting, asked about that. And does that affect the neighborhood, sure it does.
Yes.
We can't deal with it, okay?
Yes, right.
And that's, that's a similar type of thing that that we did.
But then it's just back to your point of the non-continuity between the different boards. I mean, I think this is maybe something that maybe it's CONCOM and the Board of Health maybe having the same issues and see the same issues. So, I mean, maybe we, maybe we should have a joint meeting between all the folks. And if there is a problem, maybe there has to be one final committee, right? I mean, that's talent, it's lucky we have to decide that, but I mean, you know, it's, it, you know, we don't know that they may be having problems too, right? I mean, we're issuing building permits in places where there's no water.
Right.
Just case in point, the one that's gonna happen on December second, there's no water down there, they're gonna build a house anyway.
Yeah.
And there, there, that's, I mean, we can, we can do the zoning, but that's, and it's not, that's just, that is far past our pay grade here. I mean, even if we were paid, like, we can't deal with that, right?
Unfortunately, where the rubber meets the road is with Ralph.
Yeah.
Because he's the one as as the building inspector who, he has to sign off on all those things, have you got this, have you got this? All those things have to have to go through him before he uses a permit.
There's no water, they're not gonna get a house, it's a permit.
And, you know, and that's, you know.
I'm not aware of what you're talking about.
There's no water down there, there's no water.
For this particular case?
Any, anybody, there's houses without water.
But they aren't working on.
They are working on the water issue, there's a, there's a central well for the whole town.
Yes.
And that's going dry.
Right, right.
But there's a water issue down there and so, you know, should we be issued, well, I think it's by everywhere, right? So because if you, you build any house you want and you drill your well and you get no water, you're not gonna get an occupancy permit, you just spent a million and a half dollars. It's not really our, it's not our purview to tell people how to spend their money.
I'd like to, I'd like to put a little input onto my insight as to the issue we're talking about on the cabinet's neck situation. And that is a definition of neighborhood, that's what I was looking at, it's a neighborhood, okay? That's part of it, there's two things, one, to me, cabin's neck is the neighborhood, not Sunrise Avenue.
One street.
Okay, uh, yeah, not one street there. If I were looking at one street, I have another issue. We were shown a picture as part of our evidence of all these little tiny ten by twelve buildings along there, that whole stretch. Well, several of those buildings aren't there anymore. So the people who were there and many of whom were complaining to us. Live in buildings in which one of these ten by twelves was incorporated or demolished or whatever. And now they're in a larger house and the next one's in a larger house and I believe there's only four left of those little ones. And and that, that's a concern to me, I'd love to see those things.
Two are unoccupied, they will come before us again, this neighborhood, Sunrise Avenue.
That's what I'm saying, so so these people who are living in those things that destroyed something before, now they want to change it.
And they had the opportunity to buy their property.
So I look at Cabin's Neck as being a neighborhood, not just Sunrise Avenue, and I think that would have changed had I, sorry, but I still don't. I still find Cabin's Neck as a neighborhood and that's why I voted.
And I think I was sort of, after I would have watched this September twenty eighth meeting, I think I, I understood some of Jim's frustration. I wish they would have shown that passion ten, fifteen years ago and maybe made that historical district.
And if they had.
Or an association.
Or an association with 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 building.
They wouldn't be living there in the houses they are, that's for sure.
Yeah, but that, you know, I think that's where I think I saw a lot of Jim's frustration, that like, there was nothing that we could do at this point, 'cause it had gone too far. Like, but if fifteen, twenty years ago, if they would have formalized their association or or looked for historical preservation. You know, I, I, like, I bought a cottage, so, you know, on Drift Road, as you know, if you lived there, there was always that big main house and a thing. And then there was a strip of land that went down to the thing and there was, some had a lot of cottages and some didn't and then they eventually all got, you know, chopped up. And I bought a cottage and I kept it, I mean, I kept, I I tried, I wanted to, I tried not, I didn't want people visiting me, so I didn't want a bigger house. But, um, I tried to keep it in the character of what it was, 'cause that was, that's, that's important to me, right? That's why I bought the place in the first place and they did the same thing in Watertown, I mean, they sold the original windows from nineteen twenty in that, in that house. And, you know, but there's other things. And, you know, but there's other things that have gone around. There's this, this, this big monstrosity in front of me that's just been sort of pushed together, and it is what it is. I got, I got the Brady Bunch house behind me, and it was built in the 80s, and it looked just like the Brady Bunch house. But, I mean, that, that's what it is, right? I mean, if you don't, you know, it's, it's everybody's personal taste. I, you know, I was attracted to keeping it as a cottage, so I kept it as a cottage. But, you know, the damage it might have been done already, so it is our game.
Is there enough interest in, in doing what Constance says, in, in reviewing the letter that she's talking about at, at some, at a future meeting?
Yeah, maybe she might want to apply to become an alternate on the zoning board.
Maybe, actually-
She only lives here part-time.
If the board deals with that-
She's not a full-time resident.
Oh, she's not a resident, no, the main question is whether she's a resident.
She's not a full-time resident.
Anyway, but yet, to your, your point, I think we should. At some point, I don't feel it's on the front burner right now.
My, my point was, I don't want to be, I don't want to be to that worse.
No, it's weird, she clears her residency, you don't got to be, no. Because I split by time.
Well, then you got to come to the meeting, so if you're living somewhere else, it's a little bit difficult.
I think you raise some good questions. I do think that there's room for us to maybe get into this a little bit beyond the discipline of me saying, I'm sorry, I let the meeting, won't have it again. You know, I mean, I think that this-
Two different points, Constance. These are two different points.
I know, I mean, I, I thought it was a well-written letter, and there were some valid points that I would-
I'm sorry, Barbara, I, I'm sorry.
You had two different points between you leaving the meeting and us discussing this.
I can see that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you could just kind of back off on me a little bit.
And after tonight, I will, but I really felt the need to address what was bothering me. But I've done it, and I've done-
I'm sorry that it was bothering you so much, but you do keep hanging on to that. I mean, and it has been going on for a long time, frankly. And I just like, you know, so, I, I think it would be great. I would love to explore a little bit about what Grossman has talked about.
Yeah, I mean, I'll read the letter again.
And get some clarification for other couple of things. And I, in the meantime, I'm doing a little research, and I'll provide you with some of the things that I'm finding. And, and, you know, it's not going to matter for this case, but it might be something that sparks, you know-
Could I say something about that? That I think would help a little bit, as far as the different boards working more together. I have advocated for quite a number of years that, but nobody listens to me, to have, we have a GIS system, which we all pay for. And the planning board sort of controls it, I guess, and the assessors are involved. And it's the system that you go into when you want information about maps of the town, and who lives where, and all sorts of things.
I use it all the time.
As you're talking.
Yeah, okay.
It's not the easiest thing to use. But a lot of times, you put a map present, and it says, I don't, I don't know where that is.
Right, right. Exactly, I've had awful trouble.
Even, even putting a map, okay.
But I have been wanting to have something as simple as a key entry item on that system, that when somebody looks up a property, there would be something, a pop-up that said, there has been some zoning board activity on this property. That's all there has to say. So that hopefully, other boards would see that, and would be trained enough to see that, and say, gee, what was that? Maybe we've got to look at it over. Or maybe we should let the board know that these people are coming before us right now, and is there anything that they're sure-
Yeah, but I'm going to say the GIS is, I mean, that's a sort of standard program that we've bought, right? I mean, that's, there's people that-
Oh, but they change it all the time, for their own uses.
I mean, you know, well, technically, we all see the agendas, right? You know, they're all public, right? So we should know what's going on. And maybe we should, should we maybe just, you know, not to give you more work, but maybe what you can do is, you know, when you get something in, maybe assign to one of us to see, you know, to just do that research for our own benefit, to see if that has been-
She usually does that.
Okay, so you usually know that, yeah, so I think we just need to be-
She goes in the database and looks to see if there's a previous-
Previous zoning.
But talk about previous Board of Health-
Previous zoning, but, but that's not about zoning-
Previous zoning.
Board of Health and conservation and-
I would have to be privy to their databases of the bylaw.
But I, I think that if we had that with a key with pop-up, I think it would make some of these other boards more knowledgeable about, you know, what we do, and so forth.
I would think that if they wanted to know, they would ask.
Also-
They don't.
But they don't-
No, 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 sometimes you just don't know to ask.
Right.
No, you don't, you don't, you don't-
Sometimes you really don't even know where the property is. You'd have to go dig in the nap and lot, and so forth, zero main road. Where's zero main road?
Anywhere, by meter and a half.
That's why you need a-
Anyway, I, I, it's just a thought.
Were we aware that there was a ruling on that property in 1984?
What property were you talking about?
The one in question.
A rule, oh, yes.
Okay.
You know, a zoning, a zoning-
A zoning ruling, right.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think that was brought up.
Okay, maybe it was, but it just like, phew, that's how.
That was addressed.
Okay. Yeah, there was so, there was so much going on, I was like, you know, it's hard for-
And the big one is three hours, you're going to, you're going to zone out every vacation.
Yeah, I hadn't, I hadn't remembered that conversation about the 1980s, and that would have affected. Yeah, there's just, it's a lot, it's a lot of stuff. It's like, very complex, and that was a painful experience.
Okay.
Anything else? I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I second it, because Constance is here?